All-inclusive and include those lots. And take care of that.
I'll second that.
Second, there appears to be discussion, Mr. DeVito.
Question for the planning chair. Now that you've received this okay from city council, the end result is how many days away?
We have to put it in the newspaper, we have to send out all the notifications to everyone that owns those lots. We have to have public hearings, and once all that process is done, then we get the city attorney to write the ordinance and bring it back. It could be six weeks.
My point being that y'all are still in the real estate business. This could preclude them from having a sale next week. And I don't think that's fair because the issue before us is, I mean, we've already established that we're going to rezone their property, and all the property up and down the street. So we need to follow through. They've gone through a public hearing, they've gone, they've jumped through all the hoops. And in all fairness, we need to address their issue tonight and okay rezoning them from R1 to C1. It's unfair to make them wait two months, three months.
Basically, you're just delaying the action and putting it back forth when you've already, like Mr. DeVito just said. If you've already got the intent that you want planning to go ahead and push forwards, you've got an ordinance right drafted in front of you that you've just got to place a number on and start the process. And then you just read it two more times. If you're not in favor of it after you've just sent with the guidance, then if you deny me, that's one thing, that I have a year to come back to the table. But it wouldn't take a year. If, once I get denied, it takes a year. So if you postpone me, you're just delaying the whole process that you agree, so.
We just heard from Mr. Weber a minute ago that there was no urgency in this. So I don't understand, all of a sudden now, all of a sudden, it's, and Mr. DeVito questioned him about it, and it wasn't urgent. So I, and I'm not in favor of spot zoning and adding my name to spot zoning, so.
Ms. Snyder.
That was my question, Patrick, was is this something you need to have done now, or can you wait for a few months and we can do the whole strip?
Well, I'm not in real estate, but it would be nice to, you know, sell something that I don't need. I'd like to put my financials under my property and let somebody else with vision, you know.
So notice if we go ahead and approve your ordinance tonight, so you can get started on the process, while we are then doing the process of the full street, this would be better?
It would be helpful, it would absolutely be helpful. If you see no denial that the existence of that effect, it should be commercial, there's really no reason to postpone me and just stop it. I'm not, I don't have a sale tomorrow, I don't have a development potential, I have no hidden agenda to actually build anything on the property. So I just don't need it, somebody else with vision can take over.
You know, currently as, if we did that, that Mr. Weaver would have prepared the ordinance, it would be... Or do we have it already?
You already have it.
We already have it.
Now, this is for his property.
So, I mean, that would start, you're actually going to save maybe a month.
But you didn't do it.
I am in the real estate business, I think you all are familiar enough with it that if somebody, if you had the opportunity to contract for your property, and with this and the process, that, you know, that type of contingency bidding and equipment in a contract would not preclude you from having a sale, so.
I think Mr. Perkypile answered my question.
Ms. Snyder.
I think we really need to go with this ordinance for Patrick. That's what's on our agenda, and we never know what the other people are going to say in regards to rezoning. So I think, aside from the fact that we've already asked the attorney to go ahead and start working on that, I think we need to deal with this tonight.
Will ordinances conflict?
They wouldn't have to, no.
Wouldn't it be a matter if he's already done? That section would already be done?
We're going to have to go around the spots that are already C1 anyway. You're going to have to create a jagged, I mean, ultimately, it'll create a smooth border. But right now, you're going to have to, when you draft it, go around each one, you just simply have to go around this property when your description.
Well, then I make a motion that we go ahead and give the ordinance.
We have a motion on the floor.
Which one?
To postpone it. To postpone rezoning 123 South Main.
Okay, who's your second?
Yes, Mr. Mitchell.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That's for postponing, right?
That's correct.
Excuse me, the three, the three yeses were?
Yes.
Mitchell, McClung, and?
Well, what are we voting on?
Postponing.
Postponing rezoning of 123 South Main.
That was the motion?
Yes.
And we have Mr. Mitchell, Mr. McClung. As no's.
And?
You want the no's?
Three yeses.
Those are the no's.
Let's start over again.
Wait. Let me see, voting to postpone that, and how, what was the vote?
What's your vote? What's your vote?
I think I voted yes, but I'm not sure.
Make a decision.
You get a chance to vote a second time, do you want to postpone or not?
And did we decide that there was no urgency to this?
I'm going to bring up a motion.
Let's just simplify this a bit.
Let me ask a question, I mean.
I got lost in this discussion.
We went through our process, we paid our fees, we did everything that.
We still have a motion we have to deal with, so let us take care of that one first.
I had a question before you made your motion.
Well, the motion's already on the table.
Well, can I ask a question before they make the vote?
Does council want him to make a question before we go to a vote? Will the council allow him to make a question?
No, well, no.
We're basically 3-3, you can let it die, or?
I think we should re-vote since she didn't understand what we were voting on.
I think we should probably just redo that one, restate the motion, re-vote. So it's for clarity, because there was some issues here.
We didn't state the motion, correct.
Yeah, restate the motion.
Mr. McClung made a motion to postpone rezoning on 123 South Main, Mr. Mitchell second.
Okay. We'll probably just want to do a real call vote, that way we'll know who did what, when and where. Okay. That is the motion, there is a second. Yes.
Did we establish that there was no urgency doing this to rezoning?
No, we didn't. Ms. Eller.
Okay, I'll vote to postpone.
Mr. DeVito.
She voted yes, postpone.
Mr. Perkypile.
No.
Ms. Snyder.
No.
Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
We, three.
Oh, goodie.
Don't you love your job?
There are times.
I don't know why, I suddenly got lost in this.
Yeah, I was saying, I'm not real sure about, since we already have a motion on the table to draft an ordinance to go to planning to redo the whole thing.
We can proceed with another motion.
Which I already had when we started.
It, it never was made because one was on the table.
Okay, so somebody want to restate the last motion, Mr. DeVito?
Yes, I make a motion to assign, I make a motion to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Didn't do it first time.
Second.
This will be real call? This is going to be a real call since it's a... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I need a break after this.
I'm apparently having a brain freeze here.
We had to deal with what we had on urgent.
I hope the press has got this all clear and concise.
The ordinance number will be 2183. That's for sure.
2183?
2183, 2183.
An ordinance to rezone property from R1 Victorian Residential to C1 Victorian Commercial, where as the city council, the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to rezone the following described property from R1 Victorian Residential to C1 Victorian Commercial, front and back lots 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, and 47, West Main Street, Block 103, Riley and Armstrong Survey, known as 123 South Main Street. Now therefore, we adhere by ordain, Section 1, that the zoning on the property described above owned by Patrick Brammer and located generally west and north of South Main Street, the street platted as Arsenek Spring, or West Main Street, should be changed from R1 Victorian Residential to C1 Victorian Commercial. Section 2, all ordinances or resolutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section 3, in the event any one or more of the provisions contained in this ordinance shall for any reason be held by a court of law to be invalid, illegal, or unenforceable, in any respect, such invalidity, illegality, or unenforceability shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance, and this ordinance shall be construed as if such invalid, illegal, or unenforceable provision or provisions had never been contained herein.
I want to approve ordinance number 2183 in the first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Over 10-minute recess.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 10 minutes.
I'm not even so worried.
Good for you.
Two and a half weeks. Okay.
All right, back in session. It brings us to number 2, under New Business, Commercial Recycling of Glass and Cardboard, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open.
I brought this to the table because every morning when I hear the recycling, or actually, every morning when I hear the garbage truck go by, and the glass that goes into the garbage truck just is unconscionable. Commercial has, at their avail, pickup for glass and cardboard. And I'd like to see us pass an ordinance requiring all commercial businesses to place their glass and cardboard. Cardboard in particular is valuable for recycling. All they have to do is place it out at the curb. Northwest Arkansas has, you know, serious problems with landfill. And when you consider the amount of glass that Eureka Springs by itself puts into a landfill that's not recycled, it's going to be a problem that will just compound itself year after year. We had the first recycling facility in the state. We're known for our green initiatives, we got an award this year, for 2012, for a green initiative. We need to follow through with this, and we need to make it mandatory that people do the right thing. And all they have to do, it's either you put it in the dumpster, or you put it on the curb. There's not much more effort involved in doing the right thing. And I think it's appropriate, given who we are as a city, that we do this.
Ms. Snyder.
I thoroughly back James on this. I hate seeing the waste. But would we have to come up with a specific container for the glass? As it is businessmen, most businessmen downtown here put out their cardboard because, boy, it saves them a lot of time and effort and money in regards to garbage. So that's not a problem as much as the glass. Would we check with the recycling people, or would we know, or do we have something written somewhere that we'd have to have a special container to put the glass in?
Right now, most everybody up and down Center Street, I know I use the tubs. They've got to be of a certain size that the guy can lift it up and put it into the back of the trailer.
Can we use that in commercial?
I would hesitate to mandate, you know, that people have to buy special containers. You know, it's not a great expense to have those, what are they called, the Rubbermaid, they're about two feet tall, maybe two and a half feet long. That's what most everybody uses up and down the street. You can get them at the dollar store for a couple of bucks. I don't think that's asking too much from, you know, if people are generating that much glass, then they're making profit. And it's going to cost them regardless of what they do. If they keep throwing it in the garbage can, eventually, we're going to have problems with landfills, all the garbage rates will go up. This will, in the long run, actually probably save them money.
Mr. Perkypile.
I'm glad to address Mr. DeVito. The Carroll County is the one that actually does all the recycling, correct? I mean, they currently recycle all the residential. It would be just a, you know, very minor change on their part. Have you talked to them, by the way?
I did.
They already pick up commercial.
They pick up a commercial, but it's sent to trash.
No, it's sent to recycle.
They don't pick it up.
I'm just asking all of the merchants to recycle.
Oh.
Making an ordinance worth making.
Instead of putting it in a garbage bag, you mean, put it in the container so it can be recycled?
Right, I mean, if they're already picking it up, why aren't people?
Because it's not costing them money, I think. I think if it cost you a whole bunch of money to throw your glass into the garbage, you'd start recycling.
I'm just saying, if it's already there, Carroll County already picks it up, why aren't people doing it?
Well, you'd have to ask each one of those people.
Okay, until midway last year, they came by to pick up cardboard from all the businesses on Sunday night, or we put it out, Sunday night, Tuesday night, and Thursday night, so they picked it up Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Late last year, they cut out the midweek one. But this is a plan through them to pick up the cardboard. There is no plan to pick up glass that I'm aware of.
Oh, they pick up glass?
They already pick it up.
So if you put the glass out with the cardboard?
They'll pick it up.
Okay, if I didn't know that, and I've been in that shop for 14 years, I'm not going to be the only one who didn't know they will also pick up glass. I've seen the bar across the street put their glass out, but I've never paid attention to when. So we can actually probably go two ways, mandatory or spread the word very vocally. But I had no idea.
Mr. Perkypile.
Well, at least at the very minimum, just an outreach, you know, public service announcement through the papers, local papers, such to kind of remind people, or with commercial operators, that they can do it, they can recycle glass. Does that also include, Mr. DeVito, does that include metal?
No, it's just glass.
It's just cardboard. So it's just glass. So put all your glass out on the street in little tubs, you own a commercial business.
Is it the same names, or?
Mr. Mitchell.
I understand, I'm not too sure we'll get to where Mr. DeVito thought we should be getting because of the landfill issue by encouragement. I honestly think encouragement is nice, and it's a great way, but I'm not too sure it's going to get us as far as looking at an ordinance that requires all the merchants to do it.
So if you had said ordinance, what, I mean, are there some sort of fine if you don't do it? If you're hot-putting glass in your trash bag? I mean, is that?
I know how it is.
I think it just.
It would have to be some sort of, for lack of a better word, punishment, or for the violation, if not, the plan of the ordinance to put glass.
If you're not going to recycle your glass, what do you put it in to get rid of it? A garbage bag?
Anything.
It goes in dumpsters, it goes in trash cans.
Well, everybody doesn't have a dumpster, do they? I mean, all businesses don't do, do all bars and restaurants have their own dumpster? I mean, what I'm getting at is that if it costs you money not to recycle, then you will recycle. And so if you're only allowed one garbage bag, and everything else has to be recyclable, like, that's why you recycle cardboard. If you have to put all your cardboard in garbage bags, your garbage rate is going to go up because most people have one or two, a one garbage bag limit, or two. So if it costs you money not to recycle, then you're going to recycle. So if you can figure out a way where it's going to cost people money if they don't put their glass out, then that'll solve the problem.
Any further? Mr. Perkypile.
I don't have a commercial pickup, I'm not paying the commercial. You have a commercial business, do the rate, I mean, your fee is just, it doesn't say you can have three bags of trash, or four bags, it's just pick up everything that's there, and it can be in trash cans, or sacks, or whatever.
It's a little bit different if you have a dumpster, but if I have excess garbage, I am charged accordingly. It's not a one fee covers everything. If you generate extra garbage, you're assessed for more costs. I don't necessarily feel that we have to have a fine in there. I would like to think it is the law of the city, you know, that supposedly touts itself as a green city. You know, maybe down the road, if we still find people abusing it, then we put, you know, a $25 fine on. I still adhere to the fact that most people are law-abiding citizens, and if you pass a law, most people will abide by it. I don't necessarily feel there has to be a punitive fine attached to it.
If you're going to criminalize a behavior, you pretty well have to put a punishment, and that would be a fine.
$25.
And then you're going to have to give a standard for how to enforce that. If they throw one bottle in there, is that a criminal act? Or if they threw 10 bottles in there, or 200 bottles in there, at what point does it become a crime?
Does recycling have any suggestions as how we can accomplish this? Recycling company, do they run into this another town? I mean, I know my garbage rate when I had my store was $27 a month, and that was for two bags. If I had more than two bags out, I got billed extra. And it was up to the garbage man to make a note and send me a bill.
Ms. Snyder.
I'd really like to start with a verbal push on this, and articles, and whatever. I know in my shop, I can't remember now if it's for two or three bags a week, in a restaurant, James, about how many bags are permitted?
Everybody has different scales. Everybody has different scales on.
Okay, what's their minimum breakdown for like a little small danny? Because what I'm.
It's rolled into your water bill, so I don't know what it is.
Okay, what I'm wondering is if the garbage trash slash recycle people could cut that by one bag in regards to restaurants? You know, let's say restaurants are allowed three bags, and instead they would change, they'd drop that down to two, if that would help promote the recycling. I don't know what restaurants, what their amounts are.
If you're putting your bottles in your garbage, you're paying more for it, it's free to recycle. So if you recycle, you're putting out less garbage on the street, so you're actually saving money.
Right, but I'm saying, does it work by promoting as opposed to penalizing?
I don't know.
Mr. Perkypile.
I think that's a, that's a good, kind of a good motto there. Recycling saves you money. That might be the big headline from this little topic tonight. Got that, Nicky?
I don't know, me. Recycling saves money.
Headline. Council to be a garbage.
Should we possibly postpone this until the next meeting? So we can mature the thoughts and come back.
For a discussion.
As long as they don't suggest changing the color of the garbage bag.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, postpone.
In the meantime, can we put something on our city website in regards to recycling?
That's not going to do anything.
I think there's, well, I'll have to look at it and see. I think recycling's been pounded into everybody.
Well, I don't know if Eureka's good about it, but I also know how easy it is to just throw it back.
Just postpone, so we'll take it up next time. It moves us to number 3, discussion of tax cab spacing stand, motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Yes, sir.
I'd like a motion to table this until next meeting.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Postpone. This is number 4, permitted uses in C3, motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open.
Okay, let me find my papers here. Okay, permitted uses, oh, I'm sorry, was I recognized?
Go ahead.
Okay, I didn't know if I was recognized. Okay, permitted uses in C3? Yeah. In C3 included, that isn't right, wait a minute. Okay, the quiet use commercial, okay, this is where I was getting confused. Okay, the conditional uses have community service center, convention, multifamily dwelling, education, funeral home, healthcare, and parking lots. Because this is supposed to be quiet things, now, this is coming up because of the very next item, these are almost conjoined.
You're looking, you want permitted uses, that's where you want to be.
Yeah, I want the permitted use, I'm trying to read my own notes.
Down here, this is what you want.
Okay, now, for permitted uses, the following is listed, permitted uses in the quiet use commercial district, and these are permitted by right. And it's got the whole long list. We've been asked to add to that small entertainment. I have a problem with that. Small entertainment is more or less quiet if we are referring strictly to the theater that's being, the Magic slash theater, that's being held at the Gavioli Chapel. Simply because entertainment small includes a whole lot of stuff that we really don't want to open that can of worms on. Not in a C3. It does have listed under entertainment small, live theater, and small cinemas. The Magic Show, it's a little bit of theater that has gone on there, and they have their own nice-sized parking lot, that's fine and everything. But when you look at entertainment small, includes bars, taverns, dance halls, video arcades, bowling alleys, so on and so forth. Excuse me, and I have a problem with this, what I would like to see in regards to, this is new business number 4, and it's going to be including and tying into new business number 5, in regards to the Gavioli Chapel. I would like to see the entertainment small added to the conditional uses for C3. I would like to see the entertainment small added to the conditional uses for C3 and have it state our own worded definition stating small, quiet, live theater only, as opposed to the whole entertainment small. Now, that would include the Magic Show, that is theater. Excuse me, my allergies are killing me. So by doing small, quiet, live theater, that includes theater that has gone on at that area, that building. It includes the Magic Show, which, having worked with a magician 40-plus years ago, you do need a small intimate area for a Magic Show as opposed to like the auditorium where they start it. You don't want a theater that big. You want small. And the Magic Show has done fairly decent. It'd be nice if they were able to keep up, but the big thing is it's got its own parking lot, which helps. It is quiet, and I don't know if they use a monkey or not, and they're going to specify no animals, but that's neither here nor there. But I could see permitting that in C3 if we add it to the CUP list and are strictly specified small, quiet, live theater only. Does that infringe on anything if we specify in that regards? No. I'm asking the attorney.
Are we on number four or number five?
We're on number four, which will lead into number five.
Just take it one at a time.
Yeah, so I mean, I really don't understand what you're saying about number four.
Actually, they should have been, number five should have been first, and then number four. But I worded it wrong. I thought it was going to be all together, but it had to be separate. If you want, we can start with five and go to four.
We've got it on the agenda as four.
Well, you can move to change.
Let's postpone number three.
Well, in regard to number four, permitted uses, and I'm asking this generally because I'm being kind of the newbie on the council here. Can we add to the permitted uses, list of permitted uses? And that's what I'm thinking you're trying to get to, is to add a use that would be acceptable for the use of the Gavioli Chapel.
In my opinion, we could, as long as we specify, like I said, small, quiet, live theater.
Well, I agree with that. I'm just saying, you know, because number four says permitted uses, discussion. So would this, and my question is to all here, would that be better suited in the permitted uses, or would it be a conditional use?
I'd ask the attorney.
Mr. Attorney, is that possible?
I can go either way.
Honestly, I think that's, your planning commissioners should be telling you this.
Could the planning commissioner step forward and address it?
Just a little bit.
The planning commissioner is the one that makes all your recommendations for your zoning code. This is definitely in the, right in the middle of your zoning code, but we've not been asked to look at this yet, so we've not had it on our agenda.
Well, excuse me, did you ask for it to be put on the agenda?
Well, I asked for number five to be put on the agenda.
Well, that's kind of related to this.
When I get there, I'll tell you why.
Okay. Okay.
Like some gaffed down frog.
But then it was on your agenda, so we didn't deal with it.
Let's just do, let's stick to number four, and if you don't want to talk about number four, postpone it, and we'll move to number five. Re-edit to the next agenda, then re-address it then, but we can't keep jumping back and forth.
I move to table this.
Number four.
Number four?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed?
I have another question.
All right. Okay, number four's out.
Okay, that's next week.
Now we're moving to number five. Removal of 80 Mountain Street from the list of R1 buildings for religious purposes.
Move discuss.
Second.
Mr. Commissioner.
Now, Ms. Blankenship.
Thank you.
Is your opportunity to enlighten us on planning's recommendation.
Thank you. Every year, your planning commission has to go through all the lists of CUPs and make sure that everybody is up to date and still keeping their business like they should as best as we can check. We also go through the list of legally non-conforming items, and most all those lists are at the back of the zoning code. But there's one list in the very beginning at R1 that's a list of legally non-conforming buildings used for religious services in R1. So last year, when we did our check, we didn't find that list because it's not where all the other lists are. This year, when we did the check, we noticed that 80 Mountain Street was still on the list for legally non-conforming in R1. Number one, it's not R1 anymore. It's been rezoned to C3. And number two, it's not used for religious purposes anymore. So all we were doing was trying to get it taken off of that legally non-conforming list. In doing so, we did spotlight that they were, had an activity in that building that's not zoned for C3. But we didn't, we didn't, that wasn't our intent, that wasn't what we were trying to do. We were just checking our lists.
Checking our lists.
So now, instead of it coming back to planning, the owner saying, could you please do something about this, it went straight to this table because of what we spotlighted.
Continuing, Ms. Blankenship. Please give us your recommendation of what you, planning would recommend the council consider to fix this problem.
First of all, on this, about it being in the wrong list, I really would like for the council to send this to the city attorney to be put in ordinance form to be taken off the list of legally non-conforming religious buildings in R1, because obviously it's not. And then, second thing, you could just recommend to planning to look at C3 use, permitted uses, and let us go through that process, because there's a lot more than just adding entertainment small. Entertainment small requires a lot of parking places. It requires, you know, could be a bowling alley. Anytime that you do something that's not outright permitted in the neighborhood, I believe that the neighbors should have a say, and so that process would have to happen, in my opinion.
Ms. Blankenship, so if we were to send this back to planning to say, okay, would you look at permitted uses, entertainment small, in brackets, small, quiet, live theater only? I mean, would that be something where you could narrow the focus down? I know it's pretty narrow when you do that, but would that be something that we could do?
Certainly.
I'd like to ask the representative of the Gavioli Chapel to get up and kind of...
Thank you. You know, I think we're all in support of cleaning up the code in this scenario, especially in that corner. There's actually four zones that are operating, so it's a little sloppy. You know, we support moving towards a permitted use within the C3 zoning for the Gavioli Theater as a performing arts venue. I need to share with you, we, and many of you guys remember this, we fully operate it as a wedding service venue, and it is not financially supportable for that building. So it is no longer viable as a church. It is no longer viable as a wedding service facility, and what we're ultimately trying to do is create a sustainable path to preserve a historic building. And we believe that we have identified that as a small performing arts venue. So that's ultimately the goal of why we're here. The only thing, and I would encourage that you table item number five, for, please know that we went through the process and the steps. We brought the building official in, he inspected the building, we made the changes to him, we applied for a business license, we're permitted to operate in that, in that building for the intrigue theater as it is now, coupled with offering it for community services on a zero basis. So we are sort of continuing to operate as we have for the past 14 or 15 months. So my hope would be that the council, because we're on the same team here, we ultimately want to land in a permitted use for the property. My hope would be we would make no changes to the zoning on that building until planning has the opportunity to go back, visit the code, find a permitted uses that's appropriate, go through the steps, and then we can drop the non-conforming use or whatnot. So that's my only hope that the council considers tonight.
I move to table item five until the next agenda. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Postpone. Moves us to number seven, removal of all corner setbacks. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Floor's open.
Mrs. Blankenship, would you like to kick this topic off?
I sent you a paper that tells you exactly where this front corner appears in your codebook, and it's under C2. It says that there has to be a front corner setback of 35 foot. And the new commercial constructions that are going on, they are doing this. But if you look at it, like the O'Reilly's, Bobby had a measure from the very front corner of that lot, 35 foot back is where they had to start their building. So their building is going to set kind of crossways a little bit, not exactly straight on that lot, just to do this 35-foot corner setback. And most, all of our other buildings in town are not to this. Nobody even knew what it was when we started looking at it. The architects didn't even really understand why it was there. And finally, they told me, we got this code from a bigger city, and we brought it in, and we kind of changed it around to fit our city, but they didn't take these out. And we feel like, you know, because we do have to approve all the commercial construction now, this just seems wrong. And it also makes for, you have to put the parking in the front just about, or you have 35 foot of space wasted. And all the information that we get from our planning journals and all the information that's coming forward say that the parking is better suited on the sides and in the back to make it visibly better. So we would like to have this removed from our code. It's been ignored for most all the time that it's been there, except now. And it's just, unless you can find a reason for it to be, a good reason for it to be there, which we can't find one, we would like to have it removed.
Yes.
It's been there for years, and it's been adhered to for all the time that I can remember, and anytime any property has been developed commercially on the highway, it's always been there. It's always been something that has got, it, I don't agree with you. It's part of, because the parking, terrain-wise, is usually necessary for it to be in the front for one. Secondly, it was also tied in with the landscape ordinance because it allowed for landscaping to take place in the front. It's always been there. And it's, and it's, you know, where my shops are, everything through there that's ever been built has had to, since the 70s, since we've been here and in that business, it's all had to comply, everything. Things that, prior to that, yes, I can't, I can't speak to that, but in my 30-plus years in the real estate business in this town, I guarantee you, there's a lot of people that would have fought over that because trees, landscape, and all that came into play in that 35-foot setback.
Are we talking corner lot setback? Because I don't know a lot of corner lots for commercial property that have been developed.
Maybe I forgot the word corner there.
Yeah, it's just front corner.
Front corner setbacks.
Right. We're not asking for the front lot to be different, just the front corner. There's, there's three places in our code that say front corner.
Okay, I'm going to have to put a pencil on that and see what I think.
Okay, the only front corner I can picture in this town right now is at the post office. Is that what we're talking about, is an actual corner?
Yes.
Okay, that's the only one I can think of.
That's historic.
Right, but that's the only corner I can think of.
I would make a motion to have the city attorney to draw up an ordinance removing said item from the building code.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'm still, I'm missing something. Maybe I'm just, maybe I'm tired, maybe it's, whatever it is, I'm still missing something. So excuse me for delaying this, but if you got 30, you got 35 feet from the front, and you have, what, 15 from the side, commercial?
Well, it says 35.
Right. But there's a couple of places in our code that say they have a front corner setback. And it's only in C2, and it's only in industrial and agriculture, okay? Only in C2, industrial and agriculture. And it says, it gives you the front corner, it gives you the, I mean, it gives you the front, it gives you the sides, it gives you the back, and then it gives you front corner. And what Bobby Ray says, where there's an intersection like this, he makes a measure from that intersection at the corner, back that 35 foot, and this is where they have to start, in a diagonal, not front and not side, but just front corner. And we just can't find, I mean, you can send it for, to be put in an ordinance, and if you find any information that helps us to understand why...
I've never heard of that.
See, that's what I'm telling you.
That, that I understand.
I'll tell you where it comes from.
It comes from big cities because they have traffic, and they want things setback.
To expand the corner.
Right.
It allows the city to envelop that land if need be to better make the corner flow.
Or for line.
Or, well, to put a turn lane in.
Or a bicycle lane.
That's where it comes from. Very popular in bigger cities. Because you've got a plan so that you don't end up tearing down your businesses to build the new corners when traffic flow increases.
We don't have any corners in Eureka.
Yeah, we have the post office.
We've got a motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion on it? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Moves to number eight, Black Bass Dam update. Motion to discuss.
Motion, so moved.
Thank you.
Let's be real quick. Jackie Freilich with NPR, with KUF in Fayetteville, made a little production. It aired this last week. It was about Black Bass Lake Dam. She interviewed me, she interviewed there, and a local person also, Brian Hostic, who has come up with an idea to start a, set up a website. has come up with an idea to start a, set up a website, which we may try to tag in with, since this is parks-related, with the Parks 501(c)(3) designation, to obtain funds for, to save Black Bass Lake Dam. It's evidently gonna be so costly to the city that we can't bite off that big chunk all at once. So this is, and even if this is just an effort to get us some professional services, some engineering, some discussion about that, then fine, that's, that's what it'll be. Anyway, it's a really good interview. Jackie did a real good job with it. I would encourage people to go to the KUF website and, and click on the button there. I think it's, it's something about, what is it, all-around, the Ozarks or something like that?
All things considered, or?
No, it's, Ozarks at large, that's what it is. Thank you, Jackie, that was very good. That's all.
Moves this to number nine, moratorium on 1899, 1199, business license, motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Floor's open.
I'd like to delete this from the agenda.
Second.
Remove it?
Yes.
Okay. Made in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number nine's out. Moves this to number 10, resolution in support of national carbon tax, motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Say again.
Made in second, and floor's open. Ms. Snyder.
Um, do we have the resolution here?
No.
Okay.
Oh, we do?
Because for some reason, it's not with my stuff.
It was sent to you, and here's another copy.
Yeah, no, I think I left mine at home.
Pass this down, please.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, give the resolution a number and reading.
Second. Read for passage, or just read?
Read for passage.
For the second.
I have a second here.
For the second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Clark, do we see a minute?
If it's for passage, they technically should take a roll call.
Okay, we can take a roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Six zero. The resolution number will be six two zero. Resolution supporting a national revenue-neutral carbon tax to curb climate change. Whereas the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas is a signatory to the U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement, and in two thousand, and in 2012 unanimously adopted a climate action plan. Whereas nearly all scientific experts agree on the basics of climate change. The earth is warming, it is mostly human-caused, it is already harming us and other species. If we continue burning fossil fuels at recent rates, it poses far more dangerous and significant risks for our children and grandchildren. We are approaching a dangerous threshold whereby, if it is crossed, the earth will simply take the controls out of our hands, and tropical forests, heat bogs, permafrost, and the oceans will switch from absorbing carbon to releasing it. Whereas we have affordable, practical solutions that do not require great sacrifice. We can adopt a balanced approach. We can cut energy demand with efficiency, innovations, and some additional conservation. And we can scale up energy supplies with existing alternative technologies that do not burn carbon. Whereas we can avoid the worst impacts of global warming only if we put a federal revenue-neutral carbon tax on fossil fuels that reflect their true cost to society. Whereas, there is an emergency, emerging consensus among economists that the smartest approach is to enact a consumer-friendly carbon tax with the following provisions. Goal: Reduce emissions to eighty percent below the 2005 levels by 2050. Start small. Increase predictably. Increase the tax slowly but steadily until we hit our emissions goal. Businesses need predictable energy prices. The economy needs a smooth transition. Point three: Easy to administer at home and to emulate abroad. The taxes collected only once, at the first point of sale, the mine, wellhead, or border crossing. Point four: Revenue neutral. All the revenue is returned to the citizens to mitigate the economic impact. Government keeps none of the funds. Point five: Protects the vulnerable. For lower-income Americans, the refunds match or exceed increased energy costs. Point six: Protects businesses, business from unfair domestic and international competition using border taxes and credits. Point seven: Does not play favorites, lets markets and localities pick the winning technologies. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, calls on the U.S. Congress to enact this revenue-neutral carbon tax.
You're here.
Moves this into agenda setting. Mr. DeVito.
I'm here.
Mr. McClung.
No.
Mr. Mitchell.
No.
Mr. Perkypile.
Tax gap is based or standard.
Didn't it get tabled?
It's stated, so.
Nothing else? Anything else? Ms. Snyder?
Nope.
Yes?
I think it was seconded, yes.
Well, it was stated, so it's gonna get carried out.
Yes, that's a moot point, yeah. It's already tabled.
Oh, it was tabled till the next meeting.
Correct.
Thank you.
And Ms. Eller?
No.
I'd assume four and five is next meeting.
Next week, if you show up.
Maybe it's four and five are next meeting, right?
Yeah, they're all postponed next, anytime we postpone it, it goes to next meeting. The comments. Mr. DeVito.
No comment.
Mr. McClung.
No comment.
Mr. Mitchell.
Overcommented, no more.
Mr. Brinkley.
I have one comment. Thank you, Pat Luong, for taking care of landscaping down there at the North Main parking lot. He's doing that on his own, with a lot of effort, and thank you, Pat. Done a great job, and continue to do so, we appreciate it.
Ms. Snyder.
Are y'all ready for this? Nothing.
Nope. Ms. Eller.
I don't know.
Okay, I only have a couple. First, I'd like to thank everyone who participated in the North Main Music Park dedication at our newest address in the city, 288 North Main, which does include the parking lot next to it for future reference. It was a great, great event. We had probably a hundred to a hundred twenty-five people show up, and probably the most people that's ever been in, on North Main and in, in the little parking lot at one time. Trout Fishing America did a great concert, about forty-five minutes, they were knocked out, guys, I really appreciate them showing up. Apparently, it's also turned into the, the city's only jungle gym on North Main, because I keep getting reports of little kids and, and not-so-little kids down there swinging on everything. So we may have to mark that not for acrobatics, and just, just for musical purposes. Apparently, the, the music park is set for additional exhibits or additional music sculptures coming in through a period of, about how long, Diane?
A couple of years.
Okay, a couple of years. Anyway, it's, it's an ongoing process. And for those that haven't went down there and played the chimes and beat on them, the Ozarkophone, is that, yeah, the Ozarkophone, you need to go do it, it's a hoot. So we'll move out of that one into events for June, which is start Saturday, the Rhythm House at the Auditorium from six to eight-thirty P.M. June the seventh through the ninth is the X-Terra Sports Event at Lake Leatherwood, Bicycle Event. June the eighth, the second Saturday Gallery Stroll. June the eighth is Brewer and Shipley at Basin Park from five P.M. to seven P.M. June the thirteenth through the sixteenth, the Blues Fest Weekend. I would also like to thank Ms. Kalinda Booth, Earl Hyatt, Angelo Yao for receiving the Paul Harris Award from the Rotary Club. And thanks to all the employees and department heads in our city for getting out and cleaning up after the storm on last Monday. That was a Herculean effort on everybody's part, and everybody pulled through in great colors, showed a little cooperation in the city, which I like. And that's all I have, unless there's any other comments from anyone, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?